Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, please bless this gathering, bless the work that we do, and give your strength to our colleague Teal Goodwin as he recovers from his surgery. Amen. We have several changes to the agenda. We're adding item three F. It's a resolution in recognition of honoring Thomas Mallory. We're also adding item seven C, approval of a decision support software project. Item nine C, update on his children at play signs. And item twelve B on the calendar, canceling the organizational meeting for January seventh and scheduling a special meeting for January seventh. Do I have any other changes to the agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved unanimously. Okay. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Abs, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wilson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, consent agenda approved unanimously. Next item is the Employee of the Month, Sums.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, our December Employee of the Month joined the Orange County team almost ten years ago. This individual was nominated by several of his peers and selected based on numerous positive comments I've received from county citizens and board supervisor members. Recently, this employee spearheaded an innovative training program for his department. He assisted in the creation, production, and direction of a series of training videos which use technology to address employee training needs and community awareness. This successful multimedia interactive training initiative approach has been shared with twelve other EMS organizations and three other hospital groups. Working with a limited budget and the utilization of expertise found amongst his staff, the program was nominated for the Virginia Association County Achievement Award. This well-deserving program was awarded the highest local government achievement award offered by VACO and awards sought by more than three dozen statewide submissions. His low-cost, high-tech approach was noted by VACO in their award announcement. Aside from this recent project, this employee can be found day and night responding to the public safety needs of county residents. He is dedicated to his employees, our citizens, and the mission of his department. During this employee's tenure with Orange County, he has led numerous classes teaching lifesaving techniques, conducted a fall prevention seminar, and grown the county's employee training program. He has been commended by several local businesses and organizations for his dedication to public safety. This employee is a true leader in his department and in his industry and is a tremendous asset to Orange County. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Vice Chairman, that I present to the board our Employee of the Month, Mr. Tom Joyce.
You better keep him secret.
Tom, we've been at this for a long time. It's hard to believe it's been ten years already.
Really?
And obviously, I'm very familiar with what you do.
For good or bad?
Well, mostly good, really. So, and we've had some interesting discussions, but it's obvious that you really deserve this work and I'm very pleased to award you as the county's Employee of the Month.
Very kind of you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Mr. Vice Chairman, are the lifesaving awards. Orange County values our public safety team and their acts of heroism, courage, and fearlessness and wants to show appreciation for all of these efforts, but especially to those who save a life. On the evening of October twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, a patient walked into the rescue station at the Lake of the Woods requesting to be evaluated. He gave a history of prior chest pain that had since resolved. The patient was evaluated by the on-duty Lake of the Woods crew, Benny Taylor, Dana Scofield, Chris Wagner. They decided that although his symptoms had resolved, it would be prudent to have the county medic further evaluate the patient. John Bagley was called and he again evaluated the patient, who was not inclined to accept treatment or transport to a hospital. After some discussion, the patient consented to be transported to the hospital. During the initial evaluation, a twelve-lead ECG was performed, which appeared normal. However, during the transport, the patient became acutely unstable and had two separate episodes of cardiac arrest. The twelve-lead ECG was redone, revealing a significant evolving heart attack. Both episodes were treated appropriately and the patient was delivered to the hospital critically ill, but awakened stable. Further diagnostic studies revealed severe cardiovascular disease. He later underwent multiple vessel coronary artery bypass grafting. Had all those involved not maintained an acute index of suspicion based on the history alone, this patient would have perished on his drive back home. It is great pleasure, Mr. Vice Chairman, that I present to you the fourth quarter lifesaving award recipients, four from the Lake of the Woods Rescue Squad. They are Benny Taylor, Chris Wagner, Dana Scofield, and Richard Gulickson.
Congratulations, gentlemen and ladies. This is, you know, saving a life is probably so awesome, maybe second only to giving a life. And we don't often, we probably do this a lot more than we know because there are places we take to the hospital and we don't always find out what happens. But in this case here, we know darn well that this gentleman would not have survived had it not been for your initiative and pushing for him to go to the hospital. So I really want to thank you all and you really do deserve this.
I'd like to make one comment since I'm the old guy here beside Lee. But I don't know if John Bagley's here. Is John here?
John didn't make it to.
Okay. Well, I think it's important to make this comment, and that is that we're all volunteers and we would have done our best with this call if John was not available. But he showed up and when he showed up, he was in charge and he orchestrated the call. It was a good example of where career EMS and volunteers can work together. He told us what needed to be done, we did the best we could. But I think I want to give appropriate credit to John Bagley and the work that he did on this call.
Again, thank you all. Just a minute. We didn't get your picture took yet. Go ahead. I'll think of it. Alright, thank you again.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, firefighter medic John Bagley is slated to also receive an award and get delivered to him in person. Yes, sir. Also, on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, several members of the Virginia Beach Fire Department and their friends were visiting Orange County. During their visit at a local business, an automobile accident occurred in the parking lot, which left a female victim pinned under a van. Without hesitation, the visiting Virginia Beach firefighters raced to the parking lot and found the victim pinned under the van, and the victim was not breathing. The firefighters lifted the van off the victim and they were able to restore the victim's breathing. The firefighters and their friends continued to provide medical care until the arrival of our local first responders. Without the actions of the Virginia Beach firefighters and several other bystanders, this victim may not have survived. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Vice Chairman, that I present to you the following lifesaving award recipients, which will be accepted by Chief Hartness and delivered in person in Virginia Beach. Deputy Chief David Hutchison, Battalion Chief Tracy Freeman, Captain Scott Prentice, Retired Captain Keen Black, Retired Master Firefighter Debbie Black, Chief Steve Kovar, Ruth Prentice, Toy Prentice, and Dan Ackaway.
Thank you very much.
You go ahead and make sure that these guys get this. This, one of the things that this brings out is whether you are a volunteer or a career EMS or firefighter, you're never off duty. No matter what comes up, you are the guys that know what to do and you're the ones that take charge and make things happen and take care of you. Thanks.
This is just a story of people being in the right place at the right time and they did a tremendous job.
Alright, Grover. A resolution of recognition honoring Grover C. Wilson, Jr. for his many years of service on the Orange County Board of Supervisors. Whereas Grover C. Wilson, Jr. was elected to the Orange County Board of Supervisors in November nineteen ninety-one and began his eighteen-year tenure on the board in January nineteen ninety-two. Diligently serving and representing the citizens of District Four and leading the Board of Supervisors throughout the year as chairman in two thousand and four. And whereas during his many years of service, Grover C. Wilson, Jr. served on numerous important committees such as the Airport Commission, the Economic Development Authority, the Fire Chiefs Association, the Fire and Rescue Commission, Lake Anna Advisory Committee, Rapid End Service Authority, Rappahannock Rapid End Regional Commission, Rappahannock River Basin Commission, and Workforce Development Board, as well as various subcommittees such as the Water Subcommittee and the Solid Waste Subcommittee. And whereas Grover C. Wilson, Jr. has always been interested in providing employment and education opportunities to the community and has become well-known over his years for his vast knowledge of the county and its history. Now, therefore be it resolved that on the seventeenth day of December two thousand and thirteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisor hereby recognizes Grover C. Wilson, Jr. for being a faithful and judicious public servant for almost two decades, one who always kept his focus on the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Orange County. Signed, S. Teal Goodwin, Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisor. This is for you, Grover. Grover is going to be missed. Whenever we had some real history issues, what happened and why did we do this? Grover had the answers. We haven't had the answers and most of us have all been on the board for, at the most, six years. So having somebody with all your experience has been a real benefit to the rest of us and it'll be sorely missed as you leave. So, do you have any words you'd like to say?
No.
Alright, again, thank you very much, Grover. Thank you.
Alright, next. You have one more to you.
Trying to take a fall.
Be a nice way to... A resolution of appreciation by the Orange County Board of Supervisors for Julie G. Sums. Excuse me, George, but we've transitioned. Whereas Julie G. Sums has faithfully served as county administrator for the county of Orange, Virginia for four years. And whereas prior to serving as county administrator, Ms. Sums also served as Assistant County Administrator and Economic Development Director for Orange County. And whereas during her tenure, Mrs. Sums exhibited excellent leadership and was instrumental in many of the economic development advances in Orange County, such as the construction of the new airport terminal and the location of new businesses such as Walmart and diversified information technologies. And whereas Mrs. Sums has been the primary staff lead in the Route Three Visioning Initiative, organizing and helping to conduct joint meetings at a retreat of the Board of Supervisors, Economic Development Authority, and Planning Commission, assistance with the development of the vision statement and the general advancement of the initiative since its conception. And whereas Mrs. Sums worked diligently toward completion of the Board of Supervisors fourteen priorities established for two thousand and twelve and thirteen following the January two thousand and twelve retreat. And whereas Mrs. Sums has devoted her time and attention to representing Orange County interests on numerous boards, committees, and commissions, including the Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development, the Piedmont Workforce Network, the Rappahannock Rapid End Regional Commission, the Orange County Education Foundation, and has served as the ex officio member on the Orange County Chamber of Commerce Board and the Orange Downtown Alliance. And whereas Mrs. Sums has been active in numerous tourism endeavors, including the collaboration of the Piedmont Crosswords Visitor Center and the formation of the Tourism Advisory Council. And whereas Mrs. Sums has been a strong proponent of public safety and has strived to maintain and develop the latest public safety technology in order to provide the highest level of public safety to the citizens of Orange County. And whereas Mrs. Sums successfully led the county through the Great Recession of two thousand and seven and eight while maintaining the county's fiscal stability reserve in accordance with the board's policy. She created, she creatively balanced each annual budget, made difficult but thoughtful choices for budget recommendations, maintained a team atmosphere among the staff, and as the recession ended, delivered a structurally balanced budget recommendation for the county's two thousand and fourteen fiscal year, the first since two thousand and five. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Orange County Board of Supervisors extends its appreciation, gratitude, and admiration to Julie G. Sums for her unparalleled leadership, her numerous contributions to the recent advancement in Orange County, her enthusiastic dedication to serving the Board of Supervisors, county employees, and the citizens of the county, and for her years of hard work and positive results. Certificate signed by T. L. S. Goodwin, Chairman.
Julie has really done well by us and we really appreciate it. And we have tried like Hector Keeper, but she has other priorities which we can all really understand. That was Grover's.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Sorry, Grover.
Greg, you're on.
I feel like surprises.
Yeah, well, I'm presenting this to Julie. This is on behalf of the Planning Commission and planning staff. I don't think I can say quite as eloquently as Mr. Frame, but whereas Julie G. Sums served with distinction in Orange County during the past eight years in positions including county administrator, assistant county administrator, and director of economic development. And whereas Julie G. Sums, through integrity, professionalism, experience, and common sense has defined both the position of county administrator and the standard of excellence for performance in the position for all who may follow her. And whereas Julie G. Sums' contributions to public administration and economic development excellence in Orange County are innumerable and immeasurable. And whereas Julie G. Sums has left an enduring legacy for Orange County government and made it ameliorable by her service example and affiliation. I actually said ameliorate correctly. And whereas the Orange County Planning Commission, planning staff, wish to collectively express their sincere appreciation and heartfelt thanks for her magnanimous service to the community. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Planning Commission of Orange County, Virginia, that Julie G. Sums congratulated for her distinguished achievements in public service is committed for her unwavering dedication to the position of county administrator and that's my fault, and is thankful for her contributions in making Orange County a better place for all and requested to accept best wishes and appreciation of the government and citizens of Orange County that are hereby conveyed by the adoption of this resolution. This is adopted by the Planning Commission on the fifth day of December two thousand and thirteen, signed by Donald Brooks, Chairman.
I'm beyond words. Thank you.
Alright. Our next item of business is the Business Spotlight, the Center for Natural Capital, Mike Collins.
Can you all hear me? Vice Chairman and members of the board. I received a call several months ago asking that I come here to try to offer a few words about what it is that we do. I guess I saw Julie at a Rappahannock River Basin Commission meeting. We are the Center for Natural Capital. We are a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. We are based in Orange. We began in two thousand and six. Our mission is to use the strategy, the strategy of economic development, to achieve environmental conservation and recreation. Usually you don't hear those two things together. We, we believe that the root of what every one of us in this room, all of us in our own ways, are concerned about the environment. There's not a person here that isn't. And our view is that the root of what ails us in the natural world comes from how we humans have constructed our economy. It's how we have designed commerce. And so if we want to really be agents of change, if we want to leave our natural world better than what we found it, the path is through the design of commerce, through the design of our local economies. Before I go further, I want to introduce one of our board members, David Perdue. David's in the audience. We have a thirteen-member Board of Directors. And we are job creators. You hear that term thrown around all the time. The way we do our business is we, we create services. And our services blend the interests of private landowners. But private landowners are only interested in a portion of the services that nature provides. As you all know, nature provides pollination services, water filtration services, carbon sequestration services. They provide agricultural feedstocks and food stocks. And what our economy does, in a very simplified way of looking at it, is we do real well with providing services that go to landowners. We don't do so well with providing services and providing revenue streams for services that are for the commons of nature, for things like air filtration and water filtration and nutrient sequestration. And so that's the place for a nonprofit, is we work with private companies and our nonprofit works with them to create innovative and entrepreneurial revenue streams to enhance nature services. We have four program areas: energy, rivers, landscape, and people. I'll summarize those briefly because I know that you all have a lot on the agenda today. In our energy program, we just received a state contract to create the Community Wood Energy Program for the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so in that, you may have heard the term biomass. In fact, it's a hot topic this morning on WVTF Radio on NPR. There's a story there about concerns about the use of biomass. That story was about what's called utility-scale biomass. We work at a community scale, at the local scale. And so if you've heard of local agriculture, as you know, the Rappahannock Rapid End, Planning District just got a grant on local agriculture and local forestry. We are the same thing. We are being paid by the state to create a local wood and grass energy program in concert with local governments. And so in that regard, we work with local governments, we consult with local governments, and we are program creators. We also are entrepreneurs and we create spin-off businesses and projects, one of which was Stream Sweeper, as you may have heard about. Stream Sweeper's is a job corps. It's a job corps for college kids and for high school kids. And they get paid to clean up rivers and streams and do environmental assessments of watersheds. We're also philanthropists. We created what's called a crowdfunding platform called Yayha last year. Through no assistance of government, we raised thousands and thousands of dollars for landowners, for stream bank restoration, for schools, and for a number of other projects. So that's a thumbnail of what the Center for Natural Capital is and what we do. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you involved at all with some of the state agencies, for example, that have, that share a common interest at least? Maybe they have different programs, but, you know, DCR, DEQ, and, you know, a whole list of alphabet names like that.
Yes.
You mentioned a grant on the biomass.
Yes, yes.
Any others that you're...
We work with DEQ, work with DCR. Well, of course, DCR has now been absorbed by DEQ.
Right.
Yes, we work with Department of Economic Development. We work with really all the state agencies. Because when you're trying to create new and innovative revenue streams, you have to be creative about trying to think about how things fit together. And so, so yes, we do work with all the state agencies. Just as a metaphor for, I mean, what is it, what am I really talking about? And I guess another way to look at it is when you think about a tree. When we look at a tree, a tree obviously has value for the fiber that's in it. But what we try to do, and what we do do, is we also create revenue streams that go to landowners ultimately for all the other services that a tree provides. Those are carbon sequestration services and air quality, biological diversity. All those are revenue streams. They are sources of money that in the future will be added revenue streams that farmers and landowners can sit around and when they're thinking about their cattle, they can also think about these new revenue streams when they're doing farm plans for the land.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Next item is the Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report. Mr. Morbry.
Good afternoon. Trying not to take much of your time because we have a full house today, but can you pull the snapshot up? A few things that has their fall numbers on it and touch on a few things from it. The disabled hunt we had went very well and I will touch on that in a second. We are now using our REC Pro registration software, which has been a great addition. It has helped us modernize and become more efficient. Once we have a family in the household, household in the system, they come in, click on a name, click on a class, take the payment. It prints a receipt out that has all the pertinent information, what to wear, what to bring to class, bottle of water, sunscreen, that kind of thing, and prints away with it that they sign for us. The general ledger report from that separates all the transactions for us, tells us where we need to deposit the revenue and which stream, and eliminates the thirty little pink slip receipts we had on the table that we were matching up cash and checks to to try to make sure our deposit went out. Our License to Slide program has started with Massanut and we're selling those passes and the Almanack calls for a snowy winter, so we're hoping that goes well. Things have been very good with that so far. Our upcoming programs, the new triad coordinator came and met with us and we're going to be offering some senior programs in conjunction with them and with Dogwood Village where we'll hold the classes. They have a captive audience there and we will bring in folks from the outside. And our adult dodgeball program, which we have gotten quite a bit of interest from so far and the team names are quite unique and...
We probably should all take that course.
I think you're going to be dodging some balls tonight, so you just have to be brave.
stand when I call your name and remain standing for point of emphasis at the end. David Lamb, David I don't think is here. He was trying to get back. He had to go to Stuart's Draft to buy some trail horses today, so he couldn't, he was going to try to make it. But David and Sally opened their property to us for the Liberty Ride in 2012 and '13. He was responsible for getting neighboring property owners to grant us permission to cross their property to get to Montpelier. And then he led volunteers in cleaning, clearing and marking the trails to get there. He supplied horses for our participating dignitaries and me, but he personally led both rides and provided guides for the rear. He is an inaugural member of the Board for our Orange County Parks and Recreation Foundation and will help bring trails to Orange County. Ken and Sarah Stanley. Sarah is here. The Stanleys opened their property to us for our disabled deer hunt with the Wheeling Sportsman of Virginia and the Taylor Hunt Club. We used their workshop area as a meeting spot. The ladies of the hunt club provided three wonderful meals for the hunters and volunteers. I didn't hunt, but I took part in all three of these meals, and I know a good meal. They were very good. We only got one deer for the day, but a good time was had by all. The hunters saw lots of turkey, so we were looking forward to returning for a spring gobbler hunt. Beth Seal. Beth could also not be here with the early start, but she runs Rapidan River Kayak Company. Beth opened her property for our Rapidan River Day, provided equipment and expertise that allowed for five very special little friends with autism to have a wonderful day on the river with their family and volunteers, and it was a day that impacted us all for the rest of our lives. Beth Hamilton with the Orange County Animal Shelter. Beth is representing all the departments that have helped work through us, but specifically the animal shelter. She has provided dogs for two different parades for us to walk in. All of the ones from the September parade got adopted, and I'm pretty sure the ones we had in the parade the other night will get adopted with all the folks that were asking, so we appreciate that, and we are raising awareness for dog parks and will hopefully have one in the future. Judy Carter. Judy was one of my biggest advocates before I ever got here and continues to be one. She is representing the schools, which have been very good to work with on providing us areas to run our programs and for doing the backpack program, where we send out flyers to every child in the school system to promote our programs. Jack Rick, who cannot be here today, from Piedmont Power. Jack represents the many businesses that have contributed to our success. He's specifically being recognized for always working on us, with us on any event and providing whatever equipment we need. He worked with the county and RNG Sports Foundation to purchase a tractor and mower for Booster Park to help them with maintenance issues there. RNG Sports Foundation. OYSF has done a very good job of developing and growing the youth sports program for Orange. None of them are paid, but they put in countless hours at the park. They have managed to get a lot of different organizations under their umbrella and are to be commended for that. Two more. Team Party. Our group from Suite 205, Parks and Recreation Tourism and Youth. The office relocation of tourism and the addition of Jason to Parks and Recreation has been tremendous. We all work very well together in Suite 205 and help cover for each other, so all three departments can be represented in one office. We look forward to continuing to bring you new and innovative programs. And last, Julie Sumbs. I want to commend you for convincing the Board a couple of years ago to bring back the director's position and resurrect Parks and Recreation. And I want to thank you personally for giving me the opportunity to take that position and for always supporting me in whatever crazy idea I might have. I do not know how many times I heard, "You want to do what?" So thank you for allowing me and supporting me to do my what. So with that being said, with all these folks and many more, lady and gentlemen of the Board, we are OCPR. Thank you.
All right. Next is the Tourism Advisory Council Advisory Committee up there, Lee Moyer. And Chairman, yes. You brought the Chairman, you're good.
I'm actually going to let him do the majority of it.
All right, okay.
Not exactly. Mr. Vice Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, your Tourism Advisory Committee formed and in July, has met three times to this point, so I would not say that we have coalesced into a hard-charging organization yet, but we're headed that way. We learned very quickly on that the selection of the committee members was accurate. We reflect a hugely wide spectrum of interests, which tourism, in fact, is a reality. We have everything from a real estate, a committed real estate developer to a committed preservationist on the committee, but we all recognize that we all have something in common, and that is, we want Orange County to develop a tourism industry. And it's going to take some time, going to take some doing, and it will take some compromising, which is in fact going on. What we have done to this point is begin to adjust our relationship, find out what we're comfortable doing and what we can reasonably contribute to your tourism manager and to her efforts. And in particular, the showpiece that we've got today is the work that has been done so far with DIA, David Ewan Associates, in public relations, advertising. We have begun to work with those folks. They have provided us with some very initial images to work with and some initial ideas to consider. We are talking with them and with the tourism manager about those. I'm going to ask Lee, our tourism manager, Lee Moyer, to show you that information that they have given us at this point, and then I'll have a few closing comments to make. You're on.
Thank you. When we hired Dave Ewans and Associates, one of the major things that we were looking to do was to get a consistent message and feel to our advertising for Orange County. We wanted something where people could look at the advertising and say, "That's orange." It wasn't a hodgepodge of different ideas and everything like we had had before. Although that was very effective, there was no cohesive message. So one of the first things they did for us was come up with a variety of different topics and ideas for ads. Now, like Frank said, these are all just samples. They're still being tweaked. They're being adjusted as far as publications go. We're also looking with Dave Ewans is doing more online and Facebook advertising than we are print advertising. We've historically been a print advertising group. That's what we've normally leaned toward. We're shifting that, knowing the dichotomy of the way that people look at different marketing materials and stuff now. They're going more to online and more to Facebook advertising, so we're looking at that shift as well. But this is the beginning of what they came up with us, with the new, kind of, the parchment paper-looking logo at the bottom. It's our logo, but they just kind of enhanced it a little bit so that we would have a consistent message. Arrows, okay, sorry. One area that we have been trying to focus on over the past couple of years with the wonderful work of the Enz at Montpelier and the Orange Wedding Tour that they did a few years ago, was our bridal and wedding market, and we have advertised in a number of different publications with this. And so this is one area that Dave Ewans and Associates felt as though we needed to focus on for Orange County. So they came up with the tagline, "The bride was beautiful in orange." Some of these photos on here are stock photography, but most of them were provided by the Enz at Montpelier from weddings that happened on their properties. As you can see, white tux, black tux, white dress, beautiful, orange. So still trying to drive home the consistent message of Orange County.
Let me ask a question.
Uh huh.
When these, these ads that the county runs, or do we provide these to the various businesses to use? Or both?
We, these are advertisements that we run and publications that we contract with on behalf of the businesses. So it's, but if they want to use this information, we'll be more than glad to share that with them, but this is strictly for us to use at this point.
Okay, all right.
Another, of course, because of Orange County and its strong history, we felt as though we really needed to focus on the history of Orange County and the diverse history of Orange County. So that's the next area of our focus. See our red, white, and blue history in orange? You can see two of Montpelier, there's one Civil War, but in the descriptions, it also tells more and is a little bit more elaborative on all of the history that we have here. We've done, we do numerous sizes of ads. These are some of the quarter-page ads that they ran for us. "The finest grapes come from orange," see everything in orange. While we're talking about wineries, I believe that you all, each of you had a T-shirt laying there for you when you came in. One of the things that they did for us, first off, knowing that Barbersville and Horton Vineyards were participating in a very large wine festival in Norfolk back in October, they developed a new tagline for us for our wineries, which says, "The best grapes are in orange." And we have banners that we provided. There you go, everybody. We have banners that we provided to the wineries so that when they have their booths at these different events, that they can put the banner up there. We're also going to provide some of these T-shirts for them to be able to sell at their wineries as they see fit, and just kind of keep trying to promote the idea that we are definitely rich in wineries and a wonderful place to visit. Again, "Finest grapes come from orange." That's a picture of Rainier Florence Vineyard, one of our newer wineries, and then the downtown Gordonsville picture. These kind of went with the scenic beauty of Orange County, as well as the fact that the Inn at Willow Grove and some other businesses are looking to bring small conferences and executive retreats to Orange County, so we wanted to help out with some of that advertising as well. So that's where the meeting spaces and open spaces in Orange came from, as well as our group tour industry. They toured Orange, tickled Pink. Again, our scenic beauty is one of our major assets, and so we wanted to focus on that as well. We have one of the lake here with fishing, hiking, skydiving, and horseback riding. The shadow of the Blue Ridge is orange. Once again, see everything in orange with the vineyards. You'll see that there are some that have no banner at the top and some that do. That's just an adjustment based on the picture that they're using, whether they have to take up space or not. We prefer it not to have the banner at the top, but we have to use what we have to use, so. Once again, there's Barbersville Vineyard and the Montpelier Hunt Races. And Liberty Mills Corn Maze on there. Have fun getting lost in Orange. Outdoor Adventure, of course, this is a large area for us with horseback riding, skydiving, kayaking, everything, so we use some of the skydive orange pictures and fun comes out of the blue in orange. Along with this, they've also helped work on a PR and media strategy for us. That's something that we really have not had a large focus on to this point, but they're helping us with getting information together to do major pitches to national publications and to get some attention that way, as well as to attract more travel writers to the area so that we can get some more free advertising by getting them, by hosting them here in Orange. So we're very pleased with the camaraderie and the working relationship that we've built with DIA Incorporated to this point, and we really appreciate the Tourism Advisory Committee for helping us navigate through all the ideas and everything here and look forward to continuing to tweak this and everything with their help.
Couple of areas where the Tourism Advisory Committee has come into play in this particular, in this particular effort. We noted and we are pushing DIA and your Tourism Bureau to get into more of the social media, more of the online type of advertising as quickly as possible. Members of our committee have told us that's where it's at, and print advertising, except in certain special areas, is basically creating wastepaper. The other thing that we have been active in discussing is how do we assess whether or not this is working? Because, quite frankly, the history of tourism in Orange County has in its past the investment of large sums of money for which there was no performance, and we don't want to go back to that. And at this point, we have informed DIA that we understand that you cannot advertise everything about the tourism industry in Orange County in a single ad. You can't even do it in five ads. It's tough to do it in ten. But the thing is, you're creating an image of Orange County with every ad. And the thinking, the push that I am advocating is that we want to see a general increase in tourism, in the tourism industry all throughout the county in every facet. We want a tide that raises all boats. If it does not, we're going to have to think about this pretty seriously as to whether or not we're going in the right direction. I think we are in the right direction, but we're going to have to have numbers, we're going to have to see whether or not it works. And in that manner, in that way, I think your committee is being helpful. I don't know, Jay Billy is here from the committee, are there any other committee members who aim to make it?
This is Deanne Marshall.
Who?
Deanne.
Okay, Deanne's here, okay. It, of course, when Parks and REC got people standing up, there were various people who have assisted, who worked with us also. But at this point, as I say, with three meetings under our belt, we're getting a feel for what we can do that will be useful, that will be beneficial. I believe that concludes, that concludes our report. Thank you.
One question.
Yes.
You'd indicated that you wanted to see a general rise in tourism throughout the county.
Yes.
How long do you think you need to be able to determine whether or not you're seeing an effect?
That has not been determined. I personally think we should be seeing it within a 12-month period, because it's going to take a while. Institutional advertising, that's basically what the county is doing. We are advertising generally to create an attitude. It takes a little while to do that. If we were an individual B&amp;B or some other type of recreation, we could probably get a response much more quickly, maybe using a coupon or something of that nature. But when we're doing institutional advertising, I suspect, and I'll have to get the committee to speak on this, but I suspect we're going to give them at least 12 months.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other question? Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
All right. Our next appearance is the Annual Financial Report. Robinson.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Obviously, you guys have a lot on your agenda today, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and just provide some general oversight information, just general information for you guys. The Code of Virginia requires a public presentation of the audit, and thus, this meeting meets that requirement. Before you, you should have copies of the audited financial statements and a few other deliverables. The only two items I'm planning to discuss, unless you guys have further questions, is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the Financial Analysis Report. And I will start with the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Should have a nice orange picture on the front of it. So a couple of things to highlight there. You should have a tab entitled Financial Section. If you will turn with me to that section and one page over from that, you will find our audit opinion. We audited the June 30, 2013, financial statements. Previously, this would have, the county received a clean opinion. Previously, this would have been termed an unqualified opinion. There were some changes in auditing standard regulations, trying to provide some better clarity, and so now that is referred to as an unmodified opinion. So the county received an unmodified opinion in your financial statements filed with the state timely, et cetera.
I like "unqualified" better.
Yeah. I'm sure "unmodified" became any clearer, but they took a stab at it, I guess. I won't highlight anything here, but I will... If you will turn with me to that section and one page over from that, you will find our audit opinion. We, we audited the June 30th, 2013 financial statements. Previously, this would have, the county received a clean opinion. Previously, this would have been termed an unqualified opinion. There were some changes in auditing standard regulations, trying to provide some better clarity, and so now that is referred to as an unmodified opinion. So the county received an unmodified opinion in your financial statements filed with the state timely, et cetera.
I like that qualified better.
Yeah. I'm sure unmodified became any clearer, but they took a stab at it, at it, I guess. I won't highlight anything here, but I will turn to, if you turn, just pass the audit opinion on page 4A, Management's Discussion and Analysis. I would encourage all re, all of the board to, to read this. This is really Management's Dissertation of the Financial Statements and What Happened Throughout the Year. I think it provides good insightful information. I won't highlight any of it, but just something for, for future reference. If you'll turn with me, pretty far back to page 52, Exhibit 14. And I'll talk about some of the other numbers in the financial analysis report, so. One thing I discussed with you guys last year, and I just want to bring it up again, is one thing that you can expect for fiscal year 2015. Gatsby has implemented, has adopted a new accounting standard with regard to pensions, and there will be a change, a change in accounting required that the county will have to implement along with any other government that follows Gatsby standards in the country. That will require, if you'll, if you'll notice on, on pa, Exhibit 14, about June 30th, 2012, under the category Primary Government, and you go over to the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, the, the $6.5 million. Right now, the county's plan, this is not the school side, but the county's plan itself is 75% funded. Now, that's a pretty standard funding percentages throughout Virginia, and the actuarial value of assets that is there, you, they use a five-year smoothing effect to determine that, so the losses from the recession that occurred are still impacting that actuarial value of assets. And the new pension standard does a couple of things. One, you no longer will have an actuarial value of assets, it will be a mark-to-market of assets, so whatever your assets are on that date will be the number used. And the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, which previously has been a disclosure item in the financial statements, will actually move inside the statements and be recorded as a liability. Now, does it change anything in terms of cash flow, et cetera? It does not. But it is going to be a change of financial presentation. The only thing that I believe is not really highlighted here well, that is going to have a bigger impact than even on the county side, is on the school side. All teachers are in, the county has your own individual retirement plan with your own pool of assets that are managed by VRS. All teachers, though, in Virginia are in what's called a cost-sharing pool. So every teacher in Virginia goes into the same pool, every local government pays into the same pool. With the new accounting standard, what happens is any unfunded position in that pool will be divided amongst its members in that pool, based on, on payroll. And you will record your portion of the liability. The problem with that in Virginia, and why I think it's going to have a big impact on the financial statements, and it's gonna affect all local governments in Virginia, not just Orange County, and it has the capability to be some pretty big numbers, is when you read about in the paper about VRS and discussions on unfunding and, and changes and modifications, et cetera, and particularly when the state is getting a lot of flack, one area that they have done, the county has never had an option but to pay the amount that VRS required them to pay. The state, though, since they do contribute some portion to VRS for the teacher cost-sharing pool through the local government, has used that in the past to plug their budget gap and not pay what the actuary says should be paid to, to keep the funding plan, the status of the plan up. So the funding status of the teacher plan, rather than being 75%, is about 61% right now. And that liability is pretty massive, and it's going to be recorded on the financial statements. Bond rating agencies are already starting to factor this information in. It's something that all governments will deal with, but just something I want to highlight for you guys.
Let me make sure that, understand, this funded ratio of 75%, that's probably typical to all the county governments in the, because we're all going by the same system.
Yeah, it, there va, I mean, there are variations.
We can do to correct.
There's not, not one thing you can do to do, and you're paying exactly what VRS is telling you. And when you, when you take out the smoothing effect that's happening on the asset side, I think that unfunded liability is actually a lot less than is shown there. So, and VRS has not yet determined what those numbers will be. They're, they're in the planning process for that. I anticipate they'll be having discussions with local governments near, very soon about how to, to implement this and how to approach this phase of, of implementation. But yes, it, 70% is about, is in, in that range, is every locality that I have been to and presented at is, is in that range. So there's nothing out of the ordinary there.
But are the funds, the, I mean, there's one big VRS pool, but is the, are the funds accounted individually by counties, by jurisdictions?
It is on the primary government side, and you'll see a second one there for the school board, but that only covers what's deemed, they refer to it as non-professional employees. I'm not a real fan of that, that description, but it's really your, your cafeteria-type staff, et cetera. It's a smaller pool. Most school employees are in the big cost-sharing pool, and none of that information shows up here, nor has it ever, so.
Last week, Delegate Scott and Simto Reeves were here for a legislative dinner sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and this was one of the topics that we talked about. It appears there's a move that the state is going to, in essence, pass some of that exposure, the 61% number, off to the counties, at least in, in the form of adjustments to the, the accounting, as you suggested.
That's correct. The teacher cost-sharing pool, I believe the, the number, and every locality in Virginia pays the same number into the cost-sharing pool. I believe next year the proposal is to go to 14% in terms of salary, how much you're, they're gonna have to pay in with the eventual plan to be at 20% to get the funding status of the plan back up again. They're basically fixing their pass-ins, and I think that probably will fall on the back of local governments.
That's really where I was going with the question, and it, you know, there, there's a transition period until, until the catch-up is, is made, assuming it will be made.
Correct.
How, how is your profession and the bond raters and, and the bond insurers, how are you gonna treat that, that period of time with respect to ratings and therefore interest rates and, and the like? What is your, I, I know I'm asking you to forecast a little bit here.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would handle the accounting side of it, obviously the rating agencies handle the ratings. I will tell you, though, even, even with Virginia's sins, when you compare us to other states throughout the nation, Virginia is actually one of the top-rated plans for, for pension management. There's been a lot of discussion recently in Illinois, I think it is the, the worst state in the nation in terms of pension funding. There was pretty significant changes to their pension plans needed as a result of that. Virginia is good in terms of being able to manage those costs, one, because there's not a lot of public, public employee unions that you have to negotiate contracts with. So even at a 61% funding percentage level, Virginia's in pretty good shape.
But you're talking about enormous, size of dollars.
Right. And the bond rating agencies have already started factoring this into their rating. They have some assumptions built based upon that. I've had two clients in the past six months go through a bond re-rating, and both of them actually received upgrades this year, so, and they're dealing with the same issue that, that you guys are dealing with, so.
So you think the communication is sufficient at this point that the bond raters and insurers and, and are, they understand what's, what's happening and what the plans are?
Yes, that's correct, yes. And the only other thing I want to point out in the financial report, specifically if you turn over to page twen, Exhibit 20, page 60. I know it's common practice for you guys for the school operating fund not to have fund balance at the end of the year through, through transfers from cost savings, et cetera. You'll notice that the school board does have a fund balance at the end of the year, of a pretty big number, about $4.6 million. However, all that is, is unspent capital lease proceeds with regard to their energy performance contract. So there's not like there's operating fund balance sitting over there. I just wanted to highlight that fact. So that's the only comments I have on this document, and I'll talk about a couple of things on the financial analysis report unless you guys have questions on the, on the cath. On the financial analysis report, a couple of things to, to highlight. I'm not gonna talk about all these. This is a, a report that we put together. It's not required by government accounting standards. We think it's useful for particularly boards to, to look and assess the financial health of the, of the locality over time. I'm not gonna hit on a whole lot, what, some significant changes for you guys, and it's not really changes, over the last few years, you guys have been transferring a fair amount of money from your general fund over to your landfill fund to both fund closure of the old landfill and construction of the new landfill without taking on debt, which I think is, is financially prudent. The point being to that is you're going to see some decreases in your general fund, fund balance, and governmental activities as a result of those transfers. So there's nothing to be concerned about, it's just simply moving it from one, one operating fund to the other. If you'll turn over to page six, the level of budgetary fund balance, this is just some comparisons of your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your annual, annual revenues and your months of expenditures and governmental, unassigned fund balance. You guys have stayed pretty consistent in terms of revenue. You have grown somewhat in terms of your unassigned fund balance, in terms of months of expenditures, but I think that's a good, healthy reserve ratio, and you guys are in, in compliance with your, with your own reserve policy, which I think is very, very good. The other chart I would like to, sure.
You've seen what we've done here, but, and you said this particular one is good. Are there any, any ways that we can look at this relative to what, what would be considered optimum, considered standard? I mean, is there, is there some average, I mean, I looked at a lot of these figures and charts. Are there a, a standard or an average for the county, state, or something like that?
The, I get this question just about every meeting that I, that I present at, and the answer is.
You got the answer somewhere there?
And the answer is really, it depends. And, and the reason I say that is, is each, each geographic location, each jurisdiction has your own sets of facts and circumstances that really can drive that number. For example, we have some localities that's very dependent, very dependent, as much as 70% of their revenue for water and sewer and taxes come from one company. And it really does drive the locality's budget because of the, the small nature of it. For them, you need a really big reserve fund because the risk of that one entity that it provides to that, that individual locality is a significant issue. A good rule of thumb for months in fund balance, the chart to the right, is somewhere, anywhere from three to six months is a good rule of thumb. I know you guys have some financial advisors, I'm sure they would have some opinions on that, but I see nothing here that would, would make me want to point out areas of concern. I know that doesn't really answer your question.
If you haven't got, you haven't seen anything that, that's causing you concern, I guess maybe we don't have to be too concerned.
The only other chart I, I want to point out, if you turn over with me, actually to, to page 11, your debt service load, and this, this compares your debt service to your non-debt service expenditures and your debt service as a percentage of property tax revenues, and you stayed pretty consistent there. There's not been significant increases, there's not, as you have paid down debt each year, obviously you've had some decrease in that level, but, but good solid numbers there and nothing out of the nor, that is something normally you'll find at most likely localities, anywhere from 15% to 23% of the debt service to non-debt service expenditures, and you guys fall right in the middle of that. And your debt service as a percentage of top, property tax revenues is also on par with other localities that I'm, I'm involved in. And then the last thing, this is on page 13, and this is just a measure of overall economic health of the county, and that is with regard to sales tax growth, what is the state of our local economy. And for you guys, you experienced an increase in sales tax collection of, from 2012 to 2013 of an increase of $113,000, or 6%, which is, is a good increase compared to what we're seeing at a lot of other localities. What we're seeing at other localities is 2% to 3% at best. However, there are some that have dropped, that dropped very considerably during the recession and have, that have higher sales growth rates than that, but their economy is much more subject to significant impacts from recessionary issues. And that is the last comment that I have, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Did you look specifically at the performance contracting matter with the schools, the energy, did that factor into your analysis at all? We were advised at the time we were looking at doing that, that it was, it was being treated as debt for, for, for the county and went into all of our ratios and things, and I've just wondered if, is that, did you follow that same path?
We did record it as long-term debt. So if you'll turn with me to page on the comprehensive annual financial report, if you turn over to page 37. A couple of changes, if you compare, not necessarily the last year, but the, the year before that, would be 2011. At that time, there was no long-term debt recorded at the school board. Since that point in time, they have signed capital leases for two different factors. One was the phone system last year, and one was the energy performance contract in 2013. Those are reflected as long-term debt of the school board, not the county, but of the school board itself. That answer your question?
Interesting, yeah. I, I wondered about how, you remember the discussions we had with our financial advisors, and there was concern over how that was, would be viewed.
And school bo, and, and from our experience in auditing other local governments throughout Virginia, that is the one area that school boards can take on long-term debt. Of course, they cannot issue bonds outside their jurisdiction with Virginia law, but they can sign capital lease contracts, so.
And it affects our bond rating.
Yes. Better, better question for your financial advisors, but I would go, I would go with his answer, so. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, next we have Public Comment. Do we have a number of, how many people do we have signed up?
Currently have nine speakers signed up.
I might mention that our bylaws say that the speaker shall not be permitted to speak to matters which have previously been heard by the board at a public hearing and which the board has not acted upon. The, we could, since this is a board-approved bylaw, is there interest, any interest in waiving that requirement? That restriction?
I, I would move that we, we waive that.
Okay.
As a one, as a one-time, not as a general waiver, but for this evening.
Okay, do I have a second to that? Second to that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will record that as a, it's a one-time waiver to our bylaws and allow people to speak on the comp plan, since I'm sure that's what most of the people are here for. Okay, first speaker, please.
First speaker is Don Skelly, 14184 Brookman Road, Somerset.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I thank you for your time, and I will keep this brief. My name is Don Skelly. I'm a resident of Orange County and a landowner here, and I would like to address the issue of the comp plan. I won't speak, but I have conducted a petition drive, and we have collected before us, as many of you may have received already in your emails, 196 signatures. There were actually two additional signatures that were not included on the list that came in after the time I had to go to press, so to speak. But I would like to present this to you and ask that you consider it and how it reflects the will of the citizens of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skelly.
Next speaker is Steve Yelton, Barbersville.
Good afternoon. I'd like to comment today on the, about the A2 designation, the comprehensive plan. It has been described by opponents of the plan as a sprawl, a land developer's proposal, and not needed as we already have a half-empty sprawling shopping center right down Route 3. Well, guess what? The county has not had a subdivision ordinance in over a year, so any developer could come to Orange County and build as many houses as he or she wanted. Has that happened? No. Why has that not happened? Obviously, the downturn in the housing market is much to blame, but just as important is the fact that there are no jobs to be had in Orange County unless you're a migrant worker or wish to work for low wages in the hospitality or restaurant industry. Same people here tonight oppose this plan, and the same people have been opposed to any development proposal that could create good jobs in Orange County. Additionally, I really don't understand the animosities played towards developers by those opposed to this plan. Everyone in this room is able to live in Orange County because of a developer. Even Montpelier has been subdivided. The original state comprised 4,675 acres. Today, it encompasses 2,700 acres. I'm sure some in this room benefited from this subdivision of Montpelier. Now it seems that those of you who have benefited from subdivision of land want to deny that oper, deny that benefit to others. Shame on you. I would urge the board supervisors to pass this comprehensive plan at as in best interest of the citizens of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yelton. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jack Snyder, 12574 Chicken Mountain Road.
Thank you for a chance to, uh, comment once more, the final time, on the comprehensive plan changes that you're contemplating. Nothing I can say will dissuade you from voting for it, which is too bad, because, uh, we're taking a beautiful county that has, uh, a good potential for tourism, and we're going to, uh, convert that to an urban sprawl, which is going to raise taxes, it has to, to provide the services. I'm just very disappointed that, uh, this vote is gonna go the way it's gonna go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Next que- next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Anne Stelter, one two one seven one Spicer's Mall Road.
Thank you, lady and gentleman. In the past, when I've spoken before you, it has been, uh, the rhetoric of most, uh, copying most what everyone else has expressed to you, and over probably ninety-five percent of us who have come to these meetings have attempted to persuade you to relook and to readdress some of the issues that were bothering us to such great extent. I'm not gonna prevail upon those any further because you've heard that multiple times through several we- meetings of public hearings. I hope you are hearing and listening to what the folks are saying this evening or this afternoon. I have just a little bit of a tweak of a different perspective that I hope you will bear in mind. In July of seventeen ninety, when the question of where the permanent capital for the country would be located, Al James Madison touted a site near the Potomac as possessing, quote, "great range of rich country that borders on it," which happens to be Al Virginia, of course, "and the salubery of air." In other words, how healthful the air would be in that area. Madison's desire for a healthful climate became even more important during those, since those decades of the late seventeen hundreds and early eighteen hundreds, because he himself was not a very healthy person. Our forefathers, our legacy was handed us through their legacy, which presumably they believed that we, say twelve plus or minus generations later, would have the wisdom to maintain, uphold, and cherish as they did. Jefferson's, our neighbor, contribution to the Madisonian rhetoric was modest but meaningful. For Jefferson, no compromise was possible on the subject of concentrated areas of population. They spread disease and wreak of death. Jefferson had seen the malignant effect of centralization in impoverished parts of Europe. He was sickened by airless workhouses, fearful of overpopulation, and repelled by filth. That's what urban life represented to him. I'm not saying that's what will happen to Orange County, but I do feel that the integrity of Orange County will be tremendously compromised, um, to the point that we will feel like saying and viewing some of the things that Jefferson did two cen- two decades, two centuries ago. His comments, Jefferson's comments, that the American way of life would be advanced amid rustic beauty and else, or else it would be lost. What are we doing to our rustic beauty here in Orange County? Pastoral agriculture was the healthful alternative to urban-based production. I wish for you, uh, as sugarplums are dancing in your heads this season, that you will all of so have dancing in your heads views of the continuation of Orange's pastoral beauty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stelter.
Next speaker is Steve Satterfield, one two zero four one Clark's Mountain Road.
Uh, thank you for your waiver. We'd have, many of us would have said, why'd we, why'd we come tonight, uh, or the middle of the afternoon? Yes, many comment, uh, many citizens have commented at public hearings on the comp plan. Most want the county to remain very much like it is today. We know those comments haven't been heeded to our satisfaction. I don't think these values are going away regardless of what the board does tonight. The battle will be fought on the next issue in next year, the next year, and until it's not worth fighting for, I suppose. I have commented numerous times, so I'll just mention four points. The vision set forth is very desirable. I see no chance in the world that that vision can be accomplished by this plan or any reasonable interpretation of that vision. The plan is basically a license for development as fast as possible. I know there's some rural-type statements in there, and those are pretty easy to make in this environment. We, you know, I know, everybody knows that the whole county is not gonna be developed before our very eyes in the next fifteen minutes. We know why land isn't being subdivided now. Nobody in their right mind would subdivide land right now regardless of no, nothing restricting it. It costs money to subdivide, you gotta have somebody to sell it to. Someday, the current economic conditions will change. And on that subject, I've been selling Christmas trees lately, you know, and, uh, I get a lot of builders, develop, you know, home, small home builders around here, drywaller installers, plumbers, this, that, and the other thing come through, and every one of them I ask, "Are you keeping busy?" Every one of them has told me they're keeping busy. Now, these are good people, they've been around for a long time, uh, they're, they're fixtures in the county, we want them to keep busy, and they will keep busy. The critical subdivision and zoning ordinances, as you well know, are yet to be written. The plan doesn't identify many guidelines for those, for those critical ordinances. Obviously, you, at least I know you understand that a lot of us have some major concern and a lot of fear, uh, and the plan really doesn't do much to alleviate those concerns. Well, I urge the board, uh, to take the time to revise the current draft to assure that we do keep the kind of county that most of us want. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Next speaker is Tracy Griggs, Gordonsville.
Good afternoon, my name is Tracy Griggs and I'm from Gordonsville, and I, like Mr. Satterfield, would like to thank you for taking, uh, voting in favor of the waiver because I took off leave early from work to be here to be able to speak with you personally because I didn't want to email it in, so I appreciate that or else my trip would have been, uh, for naught. Uh, I echo the statements that have been made by the previous speakers. Um, I have spoken before on a lot of the concerns I've had with the, with the comp plan as it stands, and I still think that we can make it better. We can do better, I think we must do better. I think that when you take this vote, I do ask you to seriously consider what this vote means. Why do we need to vote tonight? If we can postpone a vote or we can have a plan that's stronger, that's supported by more of the community, I think that that should be taken into consideration. I think you also have a great opportunity here as leaders, our elected officials, because I think that taking a comp plan where we can all work together as a community to get it to where it can be so that it is better, and I have no pretense that I'm going to be pleased with a hundred percent of this comp plan, and perhaps nobody should, but I do think we can eat, balance out some of the inequities there when we have the vast majority of the people that have spoken out on this plan that really disagree. So I really urge you to consider, what does this vote mean beyond the comp plan? Because I think you have the opportunity to really bring this community together when we can all work together in the next year, the next couple of months, to really address this, because perhaps even the people that do support the plan that stands as now, they might even be, uh, better served by a plan that can be done for the community and by the community. So thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Carl Kruber, Gordonsville.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. You heard me speak before that I'm against the plan. It's not true, you know, however, I'm not against, uh, development. I'm just against not having had input into this plan. I live in Orange County, I love Orange County, that's why we moved here. My vested interest in this comp plan and having input is to see the county remain much the way it is and not turn into where I moved away from, which was Northern Virginia. So I'm asking you, please do not adopt this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kruber.
Next speaker is Dan Holmes, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council.
Good afternoon, thanks for, uh, providing the opportunity to comment here today. I'm here for, for two reasons today. One, um, to speak to an accusation that was made in a recent article by the Freelance Star, or that appeared in the Freelance Star, where one supervisor stated that a certain individual, working for a certain organization, printed factually incorrect information leading to much of the citizen confusion of what is or is not in the comprehensive plan. While I believe that I have a very different opinion on what that language does or the implications of what the language is, that, uh, I want to be very clear in saying that I stand behind the facts that were printed in the document as it relates to the comprehensive plan the county took to hearing on October twenty-second. But the statement in the article did not offer any specifics on where the individual thought I had strayed from the truth, and opinions are opinions, and I know better than to try to change those here tonight, but I offer to the individual, they have my email address, they have my phone number, I invite you to call me, email me, offer me those specifics, and I'll be more than happy to show them where in the document I derived the facts that I presented. Second, uh, is on the issue of the comprehensive plan and the potential for action here tonight. While I recognize some of the changes have been made since the October twenty-second hearing, I believe the plan is a far cry from what the individuals who spoke that night and in the planning commission hearings prior were asking for. I hope that you will consider postponing any vote, consider options for a citizen-driven plan, one that is more reflective of the comments that has been received thus far. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Next speaker.
And the last speaker signed up is David Heil, Somerset.
I too thank everybody for agreeing to let us come back one more time, and, um, Steve, you and I are gonna have to sit across the table, a cup of beers or coffee or something, and hammer out three and four lines deep the differences of opinion. You know, I, because I, I just gotta mention, I've heard it a number of times from the folks that don't agree with me about the subdivision ordinance having been in place and there's no subdividing going on. And, uh, you know, we're not just suffering here in Orange, we're suffering throughout the country and in recovery mode, uh, on many different levels of economic activity, and real estate's not the only one. And, uh, for, for those of us who enjoy history, you know, the Maginot Line was a pretty good line of defense in World War Two until the Nazis approached it, and that's kinda the same way it is, we're out here without a subdivision ordinance doing fine when nobody's interested in dividing here, but when they come, it's gonna be hell to pay. But I'm not really here to talk about in these last few seconds about, you know, whether the comp plan is good or bad. I just really and truly feel like it should be a citizen-driven plan, and if the people who, um, think differently than I do about whether we should be rural or, or, or what it all means, um, if they came to me and said, "Look, you know, we have a substantial number of folks who really wanna be a part of the process, and they're not. The supervisors overwhelmingly are pushing this thing across that they want everything to stay rural, fifty-acre lots and one in, you know, one division in twenty-five years, but we're not getting to be a part of the process." Could I honestly say that I don't think that those people shouldn't be part of the process, those who want more development? No, I would think they should be part of the process, and I would be here lobbying on their behalf. People will say, "Well, you know, back when we did the one and four back in two thousand eight, a whole bunch of people showed up." Well, for the record, I wasn't in support of one and four. I didn't agree with it either, because I knew there was gonna be blowback, I thought it was overkill. So for those of you who don't agree with me, I wasn't part of that process either. I believe that we should have find, should find a cross-section of what it is that we could all live with, and I met with Kenny Dodson and tried to persuade his side to come to my side and my side to come to his, two days before the meeting, that side wouldn't have any of it. So, we all need to be part of the process. In two thousand twelve, in your vision meeting, one of the things that you came up with was about effective reflective government. We encourage citizen input through effective communication, active participation to aid in developing policies that move the county in a prosperous direction. And furthermore, one of your goals, number seven, I frankly think it should have been number one, but your number seven goal was develop and implement a strategy to improve communication with the citizens. And that's the number seven goal, and these were one of your goals for, uh, two thousand twelve and thirteen, we've got a couple of days left in two thousand thirteen. Today is a good time to start and develop a plan that would include talking about this comprehensive plan from everybody who wants to have an input to it. That survey that, that, uh, that I was a party to or that I signed, it's about two hundred people, give us a couple more weeks, we'll get it to a thousand, and we'll come down to Lakewood Woods and we'll find those people too, because they don't want Central Park outside their gate. We, we've always been strange bedfellows, you folks down there and the country folk up here, but we want the same thing, and that's what we came here for, we want it to kinda stay like that. A-two willy-nilly throughout the county, Central Park outside of your gate, that's not what the folks want. There's four of you here today. I understand, you know, Teal, um, is ill, but to me, that's kinda fortuitous. I only need two of you to sort of get the courage to say, "Let's put the brakes on this, let's let the people get involved." So whoever of you makes the motion, somebody else is gonna second, two of you can, can vote this thing down so that we can get back and do this together as a group. You know, I just don't see it any other way. Why shouldn't we all who wanna be part of the process be part of the process? I don't like being invited to leave the county by other people who disagree with me, particularly since I haven't had the opportunity to be part of, even part of it, my future is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. Any further's?
No, sir.
Okay. Next, we're going to, uh, board comment. Okay. Thank you. All right, next board comment. Anybody have any, uh, board comment to make?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Actually, uh, my comment is to Grover, and I just, um... You know, when, when I started four years ago, I think there was a bet on the side how quickly Grover and I would get to fighting, especially sitting beside one another. And, um, I just wanna say that, um, you have been my best friend on the board, and, um, I'm gonna miss you, and, um, you know, I hope that we still stay in contact and, um, we need to do better. Uh, I know we get busy and stuff like that happens and you move on and, um, but I just want you to know that, um, I appreciate, um, the help you gave me, and, um... I'm gonna miss you. And Jim, you got a, um, big seat to fill, 'cause, um, Grover's been my buddy, so unless you, like, flip coins to sit somewhere else or something like that, or draw the short stick or whatever, um, you, you know, you're gonna, you're, Grover's gonna be missed, but we're glad that, um, you're joining us, and I look forward to working with you, um, starting in January. Thank you.
I, I'd like to make a follow-up comment to that. I first started working with Grover through the, uh, Economic Development Authority, it's actually called, called the Industrial Development Authority at the time, in about, about nineteen ninety-five, I think it was, and, uh, I, I, the first thing that I learned about him was if you needed some information or an answer or perspective, he was the place to go, because of, I, in public meetings, in, in, uh, you know, small group meetings like the IDA was at the time, I think it was about five people involved with it typically, the one person that you could absolutely be certain arrived prepared, having, uh, reviewed all the materials, looked at the background information, talked to their constituents and so forth, was Grover. He, he had done his homework, he was ready to address the, the issues, and, uh, and therefore he became a great resource. I'd only been in the county about ten years at that point, but, uh, with his background, uh, he, he can tell stories about the way the county existed before there was even a zoning ordinance, for example, and things like that. While that, that, that sounds, uh, sort of silly these days, we didn't have a zoning ordinance, I forget the date, was, it was something like nineteen... we didn't have a zoning ordinance, I forget the date, it was something like nineteen sixty-six, sixty-five or somewhere along in there. There was no zoning ordinance in the county before that. And so we are certainly going to miss that, that perspective and that history and frankly, the, the energy and the enthusiasm that he brought to the table for eighteen-plus years.
Well, I think the county is losing two good people. One in Grover, who's been a big help, especially with his historic knowledge. Why did we do that? He'd have the answer. And Julie, newer to the county, but with a lot of energy making things happen. I have one other comment. Last night, I was over in Culpeper, attending the performance of The Nutcracker. The Orange School for Performing Arts. Wow! I was blown away. We're talking about kids from preschool to seniors. And I'm saying that these, these kids are really good. And this was an amazing production. And so we may be a rural community, but we carry, say nothing in terms of the arts. So I mean, if you haven't seen it, make sure that you take an opportunity, because these, these kids are really good. The kids putting together the discipline for the rehearsals, for the, the training that they need to do to make this happen, I mean, I was just blown away. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, I really appreciated that, and that's great. Something great about Orange County, maybe we can get them to come in here as a, one of the people to do our local business things. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the next item. That's the action items, the comprehensive plan. Was tabled from the October twenty-second meeting on the public hearing. Mr. Zodi.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frame. There were several changes that the board accepted at the last meeting. I can go through them chronologically if you like, I ordered the memorandum as out.
Why don't you just highlight the significant parts of it?
Well, I think first, first one would obviously be strike the Plan Interpretation Section. A couple of bullets were added under the objectives. I think most importantly would be the changes, I think really the emphasis on bringing back the agricultural into the A-two land use designation. There's some discussion amongst all board members regarding that. There was some clarification on villages in the table. That was to strike significant, so it wouldn't be a misleading statement. That was agreed upon by the members. And then some changes to the Transportation Section on page thirty-six, and also changing the title to accurately reflect that it's a V-dot, Proposed Transportation Improvements for Orange County. And there's an addition, I'd just like to close out the addition that other transportation projects table on page thirty-nine, Constitutional Highway Route Twenty, it's changed the project description, reevaluate the six intersections to Best Managed Traffic Flow, because I know there was quite a bit of discussion around twenty throughout the process.
Okay. Can I get a motion? You're, you're ready to move to the plan itself, is that what you're saying?
That's right, I'm saying I get a motion, then we can open for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
I moved, we adopted the plan, presented it, it has now gone through three public hearings with the Planning Commission and the board, with the changes that Mr. Zodi just presented to us.
Okay, I have a second, so I have a motion and a second. Let's have some discussion. Anybody's got some things they want to say about what we've done so far and what changes we've made?
Just a couple of things. I made most of my comments at our last meeting when we were trying to work through several different changes. I guess I'd like to speak to two things briefly. This process has been going on for over two years. Because when I came on the board and became the liaison to the Planning Commission, they were already halfway through working the document at that point. So, and, and a previous board adopted the vision statement something like October of two thousand and ten. So this has hardly been a rush job. There's been a lot of work done, particularly by the Planning Commission and the planning staff, trying to use all the new data that was available and really develop a fact-based plan. Now, why do I make that point? If you look at as many people at all three of those public hearings and the other ten or fifteen workshops that were held, and many times the public participated, and in some cases it was primarily a public event, they talked about keeping the two thousand and nine plan. There's a lot of good things about the two thousand and nine plan, there's a lot of similarities between this plan and the two thousand and nine. I'll give you a couple of examples. We've, we've heard discussion about this A-one, A-two villages and so forth. Well, the facts are, if you look back to the nineteen ninety-nine plan, it was there that the county decided that we really have two different types of agricultural land uses in the county. One that is more open space, larger estates, far less population and the like. And that took on names like ag conservation throughout, the current plan calls it A-one. The other piece of the ag defined in the nineteen ninety-nine plan and the two thousand six plan and the two thousand seven plan and the other two thousand seven plan and the two thousand nine plan and today's plan was the other type of ag, which talked about a mix. It uses language like a scattering of agricultural activities as well as, you know, substantial amount of residential dwelling. That's out of the two thousand and nine plan. Villages, there've been some issues with, with the designation of villages. The two thousand and nine plan identifies several other villages beyond the current version that we're talking about, recognizing them for what they are as historical hamlets that had a mix of residences and, and sort of neighborhood commercial activities, convenience shopping and things like that. So the real difference in the plans isn't these land use categories, whether it's, whether you call it ag conservation, or in one case it was called ag residential. The A-two was called ag residential. There's a, there's a table in the oh-nine plan that shows roughly the percentages of the county that fit into each of these categories. It was a little over a third in the ag conservation or A-one. It was about fifty-five to fifty-eight percent in the ag residential, then becoming ag, now being called A-two. Essentially, the map that you see on the wall there is still the same. Actually, A-two is a little smaller than the ag residential was at the time. The fundamental difference between the two plans is this fact-based idea. I invite you to look at the oh-nine plan again. You'll see in there that that plan projects that Orange County could have a population of a hundred and fifty-two thousand residences eleven years from now. Now, let's think about that for a minute. That would mean, we have, we have something under thirty-four thousand today. To get there, every person, the equivalent of every person living in Spotsylvania County and every person living in the city of Fredericksburg would have to invade our borders and come here to live within eleven years. The problem that I see and a lot of people that I've talked to, a very large group of people, say that policies were made based on that type of a population projection. Policies that were used to justify, you know, land use, zoning, subdivision ordinance and, and planning and these kind of things. I think probably most of the people in this room would say that the probability of a population of a hundred and fifty-two thousand people in eleven years is really pretty low. So why would we use such a projection to create our policies? The Plan Commission saw that, I think the Board of Supervisors saw that back in two thousand and ten, because they started the process of reviewing this, and one of the, the key principles was, look at the facts. Look at the, put forth the best-case scenario that we can develop for the plan as to where we're likely to be, what the needs are likely to be. I believe that the, the plan that we're considering tonight tries very hard to be fact-based and to try to balance the varying views of what this county is and where it needs to go. There certainly isn't unanimity in terms of view. I think there is unanimity, though, on, on Planning Commission and lots of people I've talked to, that the characteristics that represent the county are the ones that we absolutely want to maintain. There's really nothing in any of the, the land use categories, going all the way back to the nineteen ninety-nine plan, that proposes to change those characteristics, and this plan certainly does not. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I, when I, after the public hearing, I looked at some of the stuff that we had in the existing comp plan and said, "Are we, you know, are we, did we drop anything significant out of here?" And other than the fact that when we said A-two, and we didn't have a bullet for agricultural activity, it seemed that we needed one. And I had a few other changes that picked up on some of the things. But frankly, I don't see the A-two as, as, as changing the character of the county. And so I, I don't see this as the, the end of Orange County as we know it. I think that we're trying to adapt to the existing condition. And we use words like, protect the characteristics of our small neighborhoods and farming communities. We say words like undeveloped tracts that are forested or in pasture agriculture uses, that's part of what we have, and define this category, A-two. We say agricultural two preserves the rural character of this part of the county by protecting the predominant land use agriculture from conflict with incompatible residential, commercial, or industrial use. So when I start putting that as a broad guidelines for the, for the A-two, I just find it hard to see that that is a, a significant threat to the rural aspects of the county. Any other comment?
I have one, I actually have a couple. You know, sometimes I go to work and I'm surrounded by some of the smartest people I've ever had the opportunity to work with. And I, I had one of my guys stand up today and said, "You know, you need to be careful that your actions aren't so loud that I can barely hear what you're saying." And it took me a minute and it kind of, kind of made me, I thought about that. And sometimes our actions do speak louder than our words. I don't feel that this is a terrible plan. I feel that there are parts of it that I highly support. And I feel that there are parts of it that I don't so much support. I think the problem becomes that our actions are speaking louder than our words. And there is a question of why are we here? And I think that all the people that are here would, would all say, "Because we like to be here." I think one of the funniest things that I heard through one of the public hearings is you don't hear people saying they're retiring to Northern Virginia and packing up and, and going north. I mean, I, I thought that was pretty funny, I can't recall who said it, but that, that was a good point. But we want to be able to remain here, and, and I think that's a overwhelming message that, that we hear constantly and that, you know, we should be paying attention to and, and listening to as well. The, the biggest thing that, two biggest things that stand out to me is sustainability. While I am not as long in the tooth as some of us up here, I plan to be here for a long time, and my, my fear is the sustainability to what is the decisions that we are actually trying to make. And making it that we can continue to afford to live here. There are many of us that don't have the resources to turn over to continue to be able to live here. And I think that's one of the things that we so often leave out of the equation. While there are people who have a lot of holdings, there are also a lot of people here that don't have any holdings other than what they've got, their house that they live in, and they're two acres or whatever it is. The next part that I think all of us will say is a lack of faith in government. And whether that's at the local level, the state level, and most definitely at the federal level. And I think that the message that we are hearing tonight and over and over and over again is the lack of faith in government. And people just wanting to be active and be, be able to participate in that. Now, we can all sit up here and say, "Well, we, you know, we've been doing this for a while." To quote Kenny Dodson from a year ago, even Kenny said, which was pretty funny, said, "I think y'all are just throwing up all this stuff so you kind of wear us down." You know, we have a representative government for that purpose you're supposed to represent. We don't expect people to be here all the time, and, and while it's great and we like having people come and speak and give us their input and the phone calls and the emails, we also don't expect, or I don't expect you to be here at every single meeting and draft the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance. That's what we are elected to do, and that's what we have staff for. But I think it's great that people are saying, "Hey, we want to be part of this and we want to have ownership in it." The ironic thing is, you know, a book called The Wisdom of Crowds actually says that groups of people are actually smarter than the smartest people, that groups of people get together and actually can outperform the, the subject matter specialist in something. And maybe you should read the book, because it's actually a pretty good book. But with that being said, we have people who are wanting to be or feel as if they are actively participating in the process of government. And unfortunately for them, this is an opportunity that will come to pass for them. So for that part, I'm sorry.
All right, any further comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin is absent and Mrs. Adams?
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. Next item is the award of the contract for veterinary services. Ms. Hamilton?
Good evening.
You're doing it.
We're doing it together.
Okay.
This autumn, we released a solicitation for veterinary services in October. And in the first round of the solicitation, we received two qualified responses. So we reissued it again in the end of November and received an additional response. The selection committee reviewed the proposals and are requesting that we enter into contracts with all three vendors, since they offer a variety of services and abilities. And that would give the shelter the ability to access who's available at that time and who has a surgery open. And on, we're, we're requesting that it be for a one-year contract with the potential for four possible one-year extensions, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the Decision Support Software Project. Ms. Ivey.
Good evening, members of the board. As we have previously discussed in some, several meetings, questions have been posed to myself and Chief John Hockness about fire and EMS response times. As we have learned, our CAD system, whilst it has some capability to pull those numbers, the in-depth numbers that we need to be able to pull, we're not able to do unless we purchase additional software. This software was put in the CIP funding for this actual current fiscal year, and we were hoping to be awarded a grant last year that we applied for under the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund. Unfortunately, we're not, we do not, we did not receive that award. We did plan on putting the Decision Support Software back in for FY fifteen funding under the CIP process. But we've since worked with Chief John Hockness in that we are awarded twenty-five thousand dollars in North Anna money donation. But we've since worked with Chief John Hockness in that we are awarded twenty-five thousand dollars in North Anna money donations every year. Sixteen thousand dollars of that money has already been earmarked by Chief Hockness for other projects, which leaves a nine thousand dollar fund balance that we would like to apply towards this project. It does leave us sixty-two hundred dollars short of the project, and we're coming in front of the board tonight to ask for contingency funds in the amount of sixty-two hundred dollars to complete funding this project and which will allow us to purchase the software almost immediately.
Uh, since I'm the guy who usually is asking for the data, I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, well, I have a question.
Sure.
And I I'm just curious.
Uh, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought he's, actually, he seconded it.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed.
Um, so this is just to be able, there there will be more to this than just being able to tell response times, right?
Correct.
Okay, so why don't you tell me why, tell me about that, because I don't know that I'm, you know, just to be to satisfy Lee's satisfied curiosity on response time. Let Lee come up with the sixty-two hundred dollars then.
Okay, absolutely. Currently, our CAD does allow us to pull some data in that we can see how long it takes to process a nine-one-one call. However, we can't take a nine-one-one call and tell you how long it takes to process a nine-one-one call to the time a unit's dispatched, to the time it arrives on scene, till the time a fire is under control or the first time medical treatment's initiated, also transport times and mileage and things like that. Why this is so important for Chief John Hockness and myself is what is the long-term planning? We don't know, we can hand count this information, and I can tell you by hand counting information where our call volume is, but I can't specifically tell you this subdivision in Orange County would have this impact, or this business in Orange County would have this impact on fire rescue. So it's a big piece of the puzzle that's missing for the chief and I in that long-term planning and future needs. Where is the best place to put a new firehouse? I can't tell you that because I don't have that, well, I could tell you that, but again, do I have that scientific data that is directly pulled from the CAD? Whereas we're actually having to hand count data and call volumes and calculate times, which is very, very cumbersome.
Probably in terms of such things, and and response time is a big part of it, because if we've got areas that are that are waiting twenty, thirty minutes to get somebody there, I mean, we need to, we need to be able to identify that and figure out how we're gonna solve those problems. If we can't, if we can't amalgamate that data to 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 know where our our harsh problems are and where are difficult things in which certain citizens aren't being as well-served as they can be. I mean, I look at the the times in Lake of the Woods, they're pretty low. Quite often, because even when there's somebody gone, the one team's gone, there's a backup team. But if I've got someplace and a call goes out of Orange and they move the guy from Barbersville up to Orange, and now we get a call back in Barbersville, we're talking about, you know, significant delay times. We need to understand that in in context. So we're putting the, you know, maybe we ought to have two teams in Orange, or we ought to have a second backup, or something like that. I mean, those are the kinds of things that would would help define our our where we invest our resources.
Two questions. The i- is this a one-time purchase, or is this a license that that renews periodically, or what's what is the actual?
It's a one-time, it is a one-time purchase, and it will increase our operating expenses by approximately two thousand dollars. We do have a CAD maintenance, which is a normal operating expenses budgeted for every year.
Does this, I I'm trying to determine whether this is a a module that fits into the current CAD system, or this replaces the CAD system, or what is the?
No, it's, it's an add-on module. It basically extrapolates the data from databases, basically, and will put it into a format that, it's called a dashboard format. And behind the scenes, it's, when you break it down, it's a basic Excel spreadsheet that imports data directly from the CAD and takes a lot of the human counting out of it and does a lot of the calculations ourselves. So we can walk in every morning and see a dashboard and see what happened the night before, right there in front of us, as well as start compiling the statistical data that's so needed.
So you're saying it's a ma- it's a daily management tool, is that what I'm gonna say?
Yes, yeah, we have both from it also.
Any other questions? Need a roll call, or, hey, let's do a roll call on this.
Mr. Wilson? Mrs. Adams?
Um.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay.
Wasn't that suspenseful?
Well, I don't know, I've just, we're just, you know, just, you know, get people, people asking questions, maybe there are, there's some concerns. Okay, uh, next item will be done after the closed meeting. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any recommended appointments? Can we get that?
Oh, that's ready, I have, I haven't talked, I'll have to speak.
Okay, but we we wait on that now. All right. No appointments? Okay, let's move on to item, discussion items, priority timelines update. Ms. Jacobs.
Good evening. As we come to the end of twenty thirteen, we've provided a final set of timelines detailing our work to date with those priorities and tasks identified at the board retreat in January of two thousand twelve. In summary, the, from the tasks that were identified, three of those priorities remain active, work still being done. Many of these priorities, work still being done, but from the tasks that were detailed, three of them remain, you know, not necessarily complete. And those are Priority One, Priority Eight, and Priority Twelve. Priority One has definitely been an area of focus for staff and for the board for the last two years, and work on this priority will continue. And that is to identify those economic development, where the county is on one economic development prerequisites, and to determine the elements that need to be addressed. And a lot of that will continue with our work with the Route Three Initiative and those activities that are coming up. As far as Priority Eight, that is to develop and implement a strategy to review county government processes. This has been somewhat addressed at this point. We segmented it to address the forms and processes associated with the planning and zoning department and the building department, based off of feedback that those were the areas that needed the most work at the time. That process has been completed. We haven't finished it necessarily for the remaining forms and processes of the county, so that's that's in progress. And also with Priority Twelve, if you will recall, we kind of split that into two different areas of work, and one related to selected changes to the zoning ordinance, which has been made, especially here recently, with some of the zoning ordinance changes relating to accessory apartments and those sorts of topics. And then what remains is work on the subdivision ordinance, which is not yet before the board. Otherwise, the tasks that were detailed have been completed, they're noted in yellow on the attachments. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Some of these are, even though they're highlighted, they're ongoing, obviously, for
Many of them are.
In many cases, for probably a very long time. I, Priority Two, the Route Three, you know, that's that's years ahead of us.
Yes. Absolutely.
Kind of how we tackled it was if we had a a plan in place and the plan was pretty well established, we went ahead and determined that the the priority wasn't so much getting it finished, but was getting it entrenched, so we would.
Having these, having the process established.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, thank you, Asha.
You're welcome.
Uh, next item is schedule the board supervisors two thousand and fourteen, week three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman, Members of the Board, I did have a chance to talk with Tyler. She was not available on that weekend of January, I believe it was tenth and eleventh. She wondered if we should go into February to determine dates or what direction we'd like to give her.
Did she give you some dates in February?
She, um, she's not free all of February, but she is free the majority of February, so if there were dates that we conferred, I think she could make her her calendar work. I do know that the charrette will also be at some point in February, so if y'all wanna share what dates are are available, then we can use them for both bodies of work.
What about that first weekend of February, then?
I think that's the Super Bowl weekend, but I don't.
Well, I mean, the first full weekend, I'm sorry, the seventh, eighth, and ninth.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I.
And again, you can do it Super Bowl weekend, I just wanna not surprise anybody with that.
I'm not available on the first.
Okay.
I can do, I can do eighth and ninth, seventh would be a little
Well, we're not doing the seventh anyway.
Probably, but hopefully, we're not gonna do that anyway, so.
Yes, that's.
I mean, it's.
She'll hit town that Friday night and then Saturday and Sundays when that.
Well, let me, let me talk about, if we're talking about the retreat, we're talking about, uh, Teal had indicated that he wasn't gonna be, you know, looking at out at more like a month. Uh, which is why we were pushing the, pushing the organizational meeting out another, another week. So we ought not to have the retreat without him.
Absolutely.
So I think that pushes us out a little more.
All right, what now, he's not?
Uh, in talking to Teal, he indicated that it, that, uh, that this, that weekend, you know, we were looking at the, uh, oh, we were looking at, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong.
Yeah, 'cause it says cancel.
I'm I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'm in the wrong month, yeah. Wrong month, sorry, do it again.
Yeah, he was really.
Do it again, let me go back to the eighth, seventh, eighth.
Is there any other weekend that that in February that you'd like to, um, offer her as potential?
I'm sorry. But I'd wanted to judge the robotics, but I think this is probably more important.
Yeah, I'm potentially signed up to do that as well.
Anyway, that's on the, that's on the, uh, eighth.
The eighth, but I hadn't gotten the confirmation back as to the time, do you have the?
It's usually all day.
Okay.
And you're not available on the first and second?
I can do second, I can't do first.
Okay. All right. How about the fifteenth and sixteenth?
I can do both of those.
Is that okay with you, Ed?
Getting.
Do you have a preference, huh?
Fifteenth, sixteenth's okay for you? How about you, Asha?
Um, yeah, but if she can do the the eighth and ninth, that would be great.
I'll say first priority is the eighth and ninth and the, or it, I will say what y'all asked me to say.
Well. I'd rather go with the eighth, I'd rather go with the fifteenth and sixteenth, 'cause I would like to judge the robotics. But if, uh, if she can't do the fifteenth and sixteenth, I wouldn't wanna push it any further than that. Bring it back to the eighteenth and ninth, eighth and ninth. All right.
All right. We'll get the table.
Okay. All right, uh.
When you have the calendar, I was the, m, the.
We're, we're still in discussion, but we can jump to calendar with no problem.
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, I've got it now, so.
The calendar? Um, one of the things that Chairman Goodwin asked me to do was to talk to you all about the organizational meeting on, um, January seventh.
Yeah.
Traditionally, when we have new board members, the organizational meeting is by itself, and it's the first Tuesday, that's not the first of the month for, um, the county. This year, that comes on the seventh. What I'm proposing is that the board work with Springstead on the seventh to get some of the work of hiring the county administrator going, so you don't get pinged on that, and just having the organizational meeting aspect that was gonna be on the seventh be on the fourteenth. It shouldn't take too long, that's typically in non-election years what happens. So the the item before you now is to go ahead and set a meeting, a special meeting where you come down and go on to close, so then talk to John Inzavino about the search, and then actually have the organizational meeting on the fourteenth.
Well, I don't mean to be silly, but why can't you still do both? 'Cause that part, I mean, literally.
You can, but Teal can't be here on the seventh.
Yeah, that's that, that's where I was mistaken in February, no, he's, he can't be available till about the middle of January is when his doctor says that he should be, uh, back to battery.
So he asked as a, a courtesy, allowing to be at the organizational meeting?
We defer the organizational meeting until the, uh, till the fourteenth. Okay.
Does, does that mean he wouldn't be participating in the Springstead discussion as well?
Probably not, unless.
He wouldn't, but he could talk with John over the phone and not be at that group meeting that, he he didn't wanna slow down the
Springstead.
search for a county administrator. It'll be a multi-part search, so he can continue to give his input later.
Okay.
Or he might be able to participate by phone, too.
Well, that's another possibility. Okay. So let's g- uh, any objection to scheduling the organizational meeting on the fourteenth? Okay, hearing done. We'll make it the organizational meeting on the fourteenth.
Are we doing an early start to?
Uh, we're doing the, that's the normal, uh,
We're gonna do it at the four o'clock, okay, okay.
the four o'clock start. And we will have a special meeting, what time is the special meeting on the, on the seventh?
It's scheduled for four, but we can make it whatever time that we all want.
What would be more convenient for you? Usually later conven- more convenient?
John is unable to get here much before four because of his, his commitment that would not cause him to be able to be here in the morning or early afternoon.
Four's okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Uh, Jim, four o'clock on the seventh? Okay, so we will have the, uh, special meeting on the, uh, on the, at four o'clock on the seventh. Okay. All right. Okay, that takes care of the, uh, we'll get, we'll get the schedule of the public hearing when we get to that section then. All right, next item on the discussion items is, uh, item nine C, the update on children at play signs.
Yes, sir, um, we had a agenda item last meeting that was in reference to a speed study in children at play signs on Fox Den Lane. Since that, um, meeting, we've reached out to VDOT and we learned that there was no need for a speed study on Fox Den Lane because the speeds were already to be posted and enforced at twenty-five miles per hour. We did learn that now children at play signs are the responsibility of localities and not of VDOT. So anytime you, um, wanna children at play sign up, it's more like a street sign, and that's something that we would, um, be in charge of and pay for, although we would have to coordinate with VDOT.
We still have to, we still have to get VDOT's approval on it.
Yes, sir.
We have to follow VDOT's standards on on the signs.
Yes, sir, and if it's in VDOT right of way and they they want some sort of change, we have to, um, comply with that as they do work on roads.
Okay.
The the change is that instead of us asking them to do a children at play sign, we get to go through a process and we get to pay for it as well. The approximate cost is two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the sign, so.
How much?
Two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And who would install it?
Our, um, our building staff would, just as they install street signs.
Okay, so that number that we had before was not, uh, not a good number.
Yeah, there was a much larger number, I thought.
It was an eight fifty number.
Yeah, right.
When we, well, we're talking about the co- two twenty-five is the cost of the sign.
So you still have to buy a post and.
You still have to buy a post, you still have to install the post.
I, I guess my reaction was that that, it appears that one or more of the speed limit signs were missing, and they've now replaced those.
Yes, sir.
That that maybe we see what that does and visit this.
It'll work.
You know, a little, a little later, 'cause at twenty-five, that's about the best you're gonna do.
Okay.
We can do close, you don't have to come back.
No, no. Okay, so we wanna defer this and see whether the problem exists now that the. Okay, so we wanna defer this and see whether the problem exists now that the speed sign has been replaced? Okay. All right. Uh, any questions on the information items? Any uh, the committee reports, action, discussion, any comments or any issue on that? Okay, that leaves item twelve A, schedule a public hearing for the budget amendment on January fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Yes, sir, um, as y'all know, we went to self-funded Anthem Insurance and to do that, we have to pay a bill each um month as opposed to just writing a check as we normally do to Anthem. Because of the way that accounting-wise, we had to structure the accounts, we need to create a new account and transfer from where it is to this new account so that we can hold it in reserve if needed.
Okay, do I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
All right. Whereas the board of supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in, discuss in closed meeting the following matters. One matter concerning the discussion of personnel, which concerns a specific employee. Discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. In consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to section two point two, thirty seven eleven, A one, A five, and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the board of supervisors of Orange County does authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed meeting.
Motion to effect?
So moved.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Senator, we on?
Yes, sir.
To the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, need a roll call.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Okay.
Hey, thank you for being my proxy on there.
All right.
And um I'd like to make a motion that um we authorize um
The vice chairman.
The vice chairman to enter into a contract for an um interim um county administrator for employment and while we actively seek and search someone to fill Julie's shoes um and with Mr. Brian David.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
And then, do we adjourn now?
I think we can just plain adjourn, we don't, we don't, we're not continuing the meeting, we're just going to.
Well, if you don't discuss any public business over.
Yeah, we better.
The um, the um, the annual meeting is a requirement, but I don't know that it's a requirement that it be a public meeting that you do it, that.
Let's just recess and we will, we will adjourn for.